Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 20th, 2024 at 7 o'clock PM. Thank you all for being here. We have a packed house for our swearing in ceremony and our recognition of the state champions from Pleasant Valley High School. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Nauman.
Here.
Saxer.
Here.
Baden.
Here.
Pelczynski.
Thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for an invocation following the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Outreach Pastor for Mighty Fortress Community Church, Pastor Alex Sierra.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Alex, please. That side will work.
All right.
Come up a little further so everybody can see you. You know, you're an important person today.
I didn't know I was going to have a special crowd here.
They're all here for you.
All right, let's bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, as the City Council begins their meeting, I would ask that you would bless this council and that you would find favor with them by giving them the wisdom and the guidance needed for this meeting tonight. Those that are here to express their concerns, I would ask that both council and citizens be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger. I ask blessings upon our municipal city workers as they deal with concerns from the public, as well as our firefighters, police officers, who are on the front lines keeping our citizens safe. Bless the citizens, businesses, schools, and our churches of all faith, who all visit and all who visit this great city. Before I conclude, I know that we are doing some swearing in of firefighters, so I'd like to say the firefighter's prayer for them. It says, "When I am called to duty, God, whenever flames rage, give me the strength to save some life, whatever be its age, or save an older person from the horror of their faith. Enable me to be alert and hear the weakest shouts and quickly and efficiently put out the fire." We ask, Lord, this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Very timely indeed. We appreciate you. As we move to the swearing in ceremony for six new firefighters and three officer promotions, I'll welcome our Fire Chief Troy Sade to the center of the room.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Come on up, Troy.
Are you going to join me or is that...
I am.
We're going to have some fun tonight. In a very timely fashion, I was told as well, so we're going to...
Well said.
Yes.
Look at these guys, you got them lined up, ready to go, guys and girls.
Yeah, they're so good at what they do. And we're filling in the back room as well, so...
Yeah, I saw all the guys and girls out there.
So, just to kick this thing off, like Mayor Gallagher said, Troy Sade, I'm the Fire Chief. And honestly, I'm honored and thrilled to be here tonight. We're going to introduce you to some great individuals. We're going to talk about a few individuals in the back room that are also just as awesome. But first, I want to start by thanking the City Council, Decker Plain, Mayor Gallagher, and all the administration staff, because without their support and approval, our six new hires in a chief position would not have happened. So, we truly appreciate your efforts, and you're always caring and, you know, always looking out for public safety, as well as all the other members from our city. So, we do appreciate that, and we do thank you. Also, I'd like to thank family members for showing up tonight, community partners. I could have swore I saw Matthew Dubissup, he's one of our commissioners, walk in. Without him and Gene Dixon and Rob Penninger, this doesn't happen either. They're the ones that make this on this. We've got representation from other fire departments. I see Mr. Wilson in here, retired members. I see Tom Payne in the very back hiding, Captain Kingsley off in the corner. We've got our Bettendorf Police Officers here too, so I truly appreciate you guys all being here tonight. So, what we're going to do, we're going to bring them up one at a time. I'm going to say a few things about them. Mayor Gallagher is going to swear them in, and whoever's going to do the pinning is going to come up and we'll take care of that. At the end, we'll all come back up, and we'll do a group photo, and I'll let you guys all talk, if you want to. We'll kick it off with Joe Bach. On the side of Joe. Joe Sabak was hired this February 24th. He was a replacement for longtime firefighter Todd Rodger. Tonight, supporting Joe Bach are his wife Jennifer, his son Mason, daughters Madeline, Mackenzie, and Meredith. Joe grew up in Stillman Valley, Illinois, and has been married to Jennifer for 14 years. He enlisted in the United States Marine Corps after high school and served as a machine gunner and completed three tours in Afghanistan in support of operations during freedom. After he left the Marine Corps, he obtained his Associate's Degree in Fire Science, still had an itch to serve his community, so he joined the Clinton Fire Department. Within those two years, Joe obtained his paramedic license through Mercy College of Health Sciences, and he holds certificates of firefighter one, hazmat ops, and a few trainer certificates. In his spare time, he likes spending time with his friends and family, particularly outdoors. One thing I'm going to say about Joe, and I got a long paragraph about him, but the thing that stood out the most is when we were doing reference checks, it was either his staff sergeant or his gunnery sergeant that made the quote. There is no other man that I would trust more and want by my side when kicking down the door or going into a firefight combat situation than Joe Bach. That's the type of dedication and human trust that we look for in our department. So, Joe, we're happy you're here.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Bach.
I, Joe Bach.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all duties of a firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
His son Mason's going to do the honor of pinning Joe tonight. It never changes when they're 26, same thing. Justine wants to come on up. Justine Goldar, she was one of the fourth ones of our Safer Grant. She was hired in March, on March 4th of this year. Tonight, supporting her are her husband Stephen and daughter Fiona. Justine grew up near Green Bay, Wisconsin. We'll forgive her for that. She graduated from Fox Valley with an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice, and no chief cannot steal her. After college, Justine moved to Iowa and buried Stephen. She worked in the construction industry for 10 years as a safety trainer, and during this time, she started her journey with Leclerc Fire. She worked for Leclerc Fire for a couple of years before she came to us and was hired. Justine ranked first in the civil service interviews, and she continues that strong quality today. She gets high reviews on everything she does for her skill sets and her dedication and her overall attitude. I can tell you with Justine, too, I had the privilege of working a couple of structure fires with her in Leclerc, and you could just tell she was loving what she was doing, and she did it extremely well. There was no question in our mind of her capabilities. So, welcome aboard, Justine.
Please raise your right hand. I, Justine Goldar.
I, Justine Goldar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all of the duties of a firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Her husband Stephen is obviously up here taking care of that. They practice earlier, so they should feel pretty well. Maybe. Brett Snekloff, he was also part of our Safer Grant. He was a fifth one. He started on March 5th, supporting tonight, here tonight, are his wife Megan and daughter Opal. Brett was born in Danport and graduated from Danport North. Brett and Megan have been together for seven years, married for almost three of that, and being a husband and father is what brings Brett the most joy in life. Brett also enjoys spending time with his family and friends and participating in outdoor activities. Brett started his career with us as a volunteer in 2020 and then was hired by the Rock Island Arsenal in 2021. Brett is now back home with us, where he belongs, and in terms of habits. Brett also became a firefighter because his grandfather retired from Danport Fire is one of the main reasons he wanted to do this job. Brett believes this is the best job in the world, and I would agree with that. Just a quick note about Brett's, before he even applied, or before we went through interviews, I got to talk with Brett at a softball game at Walcott. And the main focus that he always brought up was his family. So, you can tell it digs deep with him, and it digs deep with us, with our fire family as well. It's probably one of the most important attributes you can have, so we appreciate that. He even left the final game to go home and have dinner with his family before it was over. I, of course, stayed and watched the game. Tonight, Megan's going to do the pinning, so he's all yours.
Thanks. Brett. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brett Snekloff.
I, Brett Snekloff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all duties of a firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations. How do you get to hold the baby?
Maybe a better idea, sir.
Okay.
Oh, that was well done. You want to make this one? Alex, you're up. Alex Feldman, he was the last of the six for the Safer Grant. He was hired on March 6th, as you can see, that kind of rotation we're doing there. Supporting Alex tonight are his parents, Dwayne and Kathy, brother Nick, sisters Alyssa and Anna, and girlfriend Aubrey. Alex was born and raised in Waterloo, Iowa. He attended Columbus Catholic High School and was trained on to Kirkwood College, where he obtained his Associate's Degree in Fire Science. After graduation, he knew exactly what he wanted to do, and that was become a firefighter. I believe Bettendorf was the first place that he put in an application, and of course, we immediately picked him up. Alex has his firefighter one and has hazmat operation certificates already, and he's working on his firefighter two. Alex's spare time, he likes to fish, play pickleball, and hang out with all of his friends. So, just a few notes about Alex. He has a great smile. He has that kid that could almost fool you with his smile. So, you need to be very cautious. Our guys learned that very quick. He's a very fierce competitor, and he's very naturally talented at what he does. So, the days of the Sean Shane, Twisted with McFarland era is probably over for you guys back there. I think we have a new rock star, and we're looking forward to what he does with our department.
Right hand and repeat after me. I, Alex Feldman.
I, Alex Feldman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
And his mother Kathy is up here to do the honors. For all the times he didn't listen, just stick him once or twice. Call it even. Well, 300, 400, I don't give a fuck. We haven't had you that long, so... This is Nathaniel Lang. He joined our department on June 13th of this year and was Tim South's replacement. Is Tim out there by chance? Either Florida. Well, either way, we're going to make fun of Tim all a little bit right here. Nathan, do you golf?
No.
Okay, so, here's the deal. I need to buy a pair of golf shorts, like a pass out color. Collared golf shirt, some fancy golf shoes, and the biggest, whitest white belt. That's bet your guy for this. Just a little fun with Tim. Family members here tonight are Nathan, Nathan's parents, Joe and Jerry. Nathan grew up in Florida, Iowa, and served as a volunteer firefighter for about three and a half years before coming to Bettendorf. After graduation, Nathan became a certified master technician and spent the last six years working on Gary Ford in Iowa City. Nathan has over 75 certifications that cover everything in the automotive realm, so I'm glad Brian's not here to hear that. But the most important ones he has are his firefighter one and hazmat ops for us. Nathan enjoys hunting, fishing, spending time with his dog. And just a little fun fact about Nathan, he played trombone in high school, so if that ever becomes a corporate game event, Captain, he's your man. One thing that stands out for me about Nathan is his mechanical aptitude, and I'm sure he's got that from being a mechanic for the last six years. But he also knows how to work with other equipment, like harnesses and stuff like that. He can diagnose things, and sometimes the newer generation has a little bit of difficulty with that, so we're hoping he can bring some of that knowledge forward to the rest of our crews. So, welcome.
Remember that different ball and all the golf stuff, that's for another guy, don't worry. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Nathan Lang.
I, Nathan Lang.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
His father Joe is going to come up and do the honors. Come on up. Simon joined our department on June 14th of this year and filled a vacant firefighter position as a result of an officer's promotion. Here tonight, supporting Simon are his mother Rebecca, sister Ella, Aunt Rachel, Grandpa Carl, and Grandma Faith. Simon is originally from Muscatine, but also resided in Connecticut for about four years. Simon has two brothers and a sister that weren't able to be here tonight with us. Simon also has Colleen and Dot, who is also thinking it's not with us here tonight. During Simon's spare time, he likes to fish and shoot trap. Corporate games, we're all in that. Simon came to us for medic ambulance, and he just achieved his paramedic certificate, I believe, last week, so congratulations on that. We love the commitment to furthering your career, providing better, you know, healthcare for our community, so we're very proud of that. At this point in his career, Simon doesn't have a lot of fire certifications, and a matter of fact, I don't think he's had any training before he came to our department. So, he's had to work a lot harder than maybe some of the rest, and Simon has done that. Day in and day out, he is trained and trained harder than any of them, and that's the type of dedication that we need in the fire service, so congratulations.
And repeat after me. I, Simon Reichert.
I, Simon Reichert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of firefighter.
Discharge all of the duties as firefighter.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Mother, Brett back there? Yep, come on up. Now, we're going to start with our company officer promotions, and we're going to start with Brian Moriarty. Brian started his career with Bettendorf as a volunteer in May of 2006 and then hired as a career firefighter with Bettendorf in 2007. Brian's recent promotion to lieutenant was approximately three weeks ago on July 29th. Tonight, supporting Brian are his wife Elise, daughter Stella and Caroline, and mom Carol and sister Nora. Brian grew up in Danport, played travel hockey from grade school through college, so he's pretty talented. Graduated from Danport Central High School in 2002 and then from Kirkwood College in 2006 with his Associate's Degree in Fire Science. Brian and Elise were married in 2017 and obviously have two beautiful daughters, Ella and Caroline. Brian has no free time because he has two beautiful daughters. He has Brian's certification and achievements over the year. We're going to rattle him real quick. Firefighter one, firefighter two, paramedic, certified driver, operator, firearm company officer, rid under fire, fire instructor, one hazmat tech, swift water rescue tech, and on and on and on. The biggest thing for that stuck out, he was also awarded the distinguished service medal in 2021 for his actions and thought process under pressure in a house fire that ultimately saved a life. It was only four minutes that elapsed by the time Brian got out of the engine, searched the house, and pulled this lady from truly what was going to be a terrible situation or outcome. And Brian was able to do that, just not because he knew where the bedroom was, but he was there on an EMS call previously, and he knew where this lady would always stay in her chair. So, his other crews went to search the bedroom, which you would normally do at that time of hour. Brian went right to that, right to that plan. He was able to pull her out. The back of the house was fully engulfed, smoked down to the floor, so congratulations on that honor. That's just... One last thing I'll say about Brian. For me, it's reliability. Anytime you ask Brian to do something, he does it, and he does it efficiently. He does it in a fiscal, responsible manner, and you don't have to hibernate him. He's in charge of our EMS supplies. We always have the EMS supplies. He's always searching for better ideas, always being creative, and that's the type of leader we want. I think the biggest thing for Brian is he takes his company officer position very seriously. He is dedicated to his crew, and I see that every day as he works with his crew and prepares early for what they're going to do that day. So, this is the type of leaders that we're going to keep promoting within our department.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brian Moriarty.
I, Brian Moriarty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of fire lieutenant.
Discharge all duties of fire lieutenant.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
His wife Elise, come on up. Todd Akers started his career in Bettendorf in October of 1995, probably before some of these guys were even born. And he was promoted to lieutenant in February of 2023, and as of this year, July 29th, he holds a rank of captain, not only having oversight of his engine company, but of the entire ship. Family members here tonight are his wife Dana, sons Tristan and Cade standing in the back room, parents Linda and Helen, and his mother-in-law Carol. This October, Todd will reach his 29th year as a crew member with Bettendorf, and he served over 32 years as a paramedic in an overall capacity. As you can imagine, Todd has several achievements, several certificates, so I'm just going to really hit the higher level ones. His firefighter two, once again hazmat technician, advanced swift water technician, master diver certification, fire investigation technician, served as combat medic for our police department's ERU team, and just recently completed the National Fire Academy's Managing Officer Program. Todd also did a two-year stint in our Fire Prevention Bureau, conducting rental inspections, updating and creating pre-plans, and assisted captain canoid, which was really chief canoid, with some plan reviews. Todd is also, Todd's looking forward to mentoring the newer members on new shift as the captain. Fun fact for Todd Akers, he's a lifelong Green Packers fan. I know this because I've worked, that's not right. I know this because I've actually worked with Todd for the last three years, mainly on shift together, and one of his great attributes is he never gets frazzled. I mean, right now, he wants to kill me. So, he works well under pressure. He can think through critical situations, and I left him out of the mix earlier when I did the Sean Shane thing with the McFarland, but he was a D1 athlete in College Two. It's just, now he's not a D1 athlete anymore like myself. I can give Todd a little bit harder time because I've worked with him for 30 years. Todd's got a lot of responsibility ahead of him. He's in this position because I know he can do the job. He's got to take our inspection shift, redesign how we're going to work our scheduling, and put it throughout all the shifts, not just one. I know Todd's looking forward to it. I had him in my office yesterday. He was going over and asking all the right questions, so we're excited to see what he's going to do in the future with our department. So, welcome aboard, Todd. So welcome aboard, Todd.
I, Todd Akers.
I, Todd Akers.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of fire captain.
Discharge all the duties of fire captain.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
His wife Dana's going to join us. Just so you know, he's really a Bears fan, I mean, over the top. That's the problem. Last one, Mayor. But not least.
Cost me money, too.
Yeah, I know, introduce him. He knows the role, he's been here so long. Everybody, this is Bill McDonald. Bill started his Bed North career as a resident volunteer at Station 4 in the spring of 2000, and was hired on August 6th of 2000 as a career firefighter. He thinks he did that because he's really talented. I think that happened because he is roommates with Chief Matt Lawson. We wanted to split those two, we could see where that was heading right from the very beginning. Just kidding, by the way. He advanced through his career, being promoted as lieutenant March of 2019 to captain in 2021, and then his latest rank of assistant chief this year on July 28th. Family members here tonight with Bill are his wife Hillary, daughters McKenzie, Lydia, and Ellie, his mother Jane, twin brother Ryan and his family, as well as his mother-in-law and father-in-law Ruth and John. Once again, you can imagine all the certifications and achievements that he would hold as a 24-year veteran. So here's a few. Once again, he's a very skilled paramedic, hazmat technician, fire investigation technician, fire and EMS instructor, firefighter II, fire officer, and has an associate's degree in emergency medical services. He's been part of our Megas 43 hazmat and political team, as well as the Bed North and Division Training Officer Representative over the past several years. One of his biggest achievements early on is he also completed the National Fire Academy's Managing Officer Program. I think you were one of the first of three, or maybe four, that completed it. So that was huge, and that was back in 2017. He's been a member of the police department's ERU team as a tactical medic for the last nine years. He is also an instructor for Illinois Fire Service Institute, and that does amazing things for us. It keeps our training up with the latest techniques. And he brings that back along with Mike Martin, Lieutenant Martin, that's in the back somewhere, I saw him wearing. They do that on their own time. They don't get compensated for it, they take vacation time to do it. But training is what he is going to be leading, along with operations. So he takes it very seriously, so we're glad he does that. Just a couple of quick things with help, Bill. He's a tremendous leader. Once again, these are the type of individuals you want leading your crews. He takes everything to heart, he does everything for his crews. You can call him anytime, day or night, and he is there. He also is understanding the big picture for the community, and that's why he's in this position. He's been instrumental in forging the trainings with Danport, with medic EMS, with EMA. And he knows how to work with community partners, and that's what we're looking for at this scale. So welcome aboard, Lee.
I, Bill McDonald.
I, Bill McDonald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of fire assistant chief.
Discharge all duties as fire assistant chief.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Bill's oldest, Bill and Hillary's oldest diver. Just going to do the honors tonight. We're going to bring everybody back up. We're going to, that means everybody. We're going to bring everybody back up.
Come on up, all of you. We're going to get a picture, is that what we're doing?
We're going to, anybody want to say anything?
Honestly, I know, I just want to speak on behalf of everyone that's up here, all the firefighters in the back. I really appreciate all the family and friends coming out here. You know, getting hired, getting promoted, it's a lot. And it only happens because of people like you. Chief Said, we want to thank you for your leadership, the direction you're putting the department in is top notch. And finally, again, just keep it quick, Mayor, Council, Decker, all the administrators, we really appreciate your guys' support with public safety now and moving forward. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
So one last thing, real quick. I didn't, that surprised me, I didn't think anybody was going to say anything, so I appreciate that. But just in closing, we joked around a little bit tonight. Some of us joked around, some of them maybe not. But I just wanted to show you what our culture is like, just a little insight on it, kind of how our Zoom mornings go, we razz each other a little bit. You know, it's kind of the conversations you're going to have after you ran four EMS calls after midnight, you're going back to the station at 4:30 AM, it's too late to go back to bed. So you got to joke around a little bit, and we do that a lot in our department, but they also know when it's time to be serious. And I guess the biggest point I'll make to you guys is rely on each other, because you're going to have some of the greatest moments of your life in this career, and you're going to have some very difficult ones as well. But if you rely on the people standing next to you, and those people in the back room, you're going to get through anything. So congratulations on being a sworn member of the greatest fire department there is. So now we can do pictures.
Todd's tall, I'll be in the back. Don't need to be in the back.
You guys are tall.
Congratulations, guys and gals.
I will, I will. Mayor, I think we're going to continue this fun with the girls. Softball team, if you guys would just hold tight, your family would hold tight for a little bit. We appreciate it until we're done with the PV state champions.
Thank you. Come on up, PV state champs. So I get the opportunity to invite to City Hall state champions. And we do this because you've already started to exhibit the types of characteristics that you just saw embodied in our firefight, in our police officers, it's embodied in the folks behind you and to your side. City government is just people who step up to do the right thing to help out. And we want you to understand that it's easy for you to get involved in city government or volunteering. You already have shown great attributes like teamwork, perseverance. You worked hard at a skill or a craft, and you became a champion. An awesome job at the state championships this year, bringing home a second state championship for Pleasant Valley Girls Softball in your rich history of great athletic programs. These ladies are coached by head coach Amanda Ray. Amanda here.
Yeah, we're here.
All right. Her assistant coaches are Zach Miller, we can point him out, and Peggy. King.
Klinger.
Klinger, sorry about that, thank you very much. They earned the 2024 5A Girls Softball Championship on July 25th, when they beat West Des Moines Valley in a hard-fought 14 to 11 victory. Again, the second time PV has brought home a title. Got to get new notebooks. So the Spartans came into the game, leading the state in home runs with 57 and melted 4 in the state championship game. Holy cow. 15 hits in that 14 to 11 championship. Ladies and gentlemen, state champion girl softball players from Pleasant Valley High School. In commemoration of your state championship, we have a little class flash or something in case, which says, "In recognition of Pleasant Valley Spartans High School Girl Softball Team, 2024 Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Class 5A Girl State Softball Champions." Way to go.
This team is just really hardworking. We talked to all season about how close these girls are, and that's what really makes them people be so successful. They believe in each other, they support each other, and that's what it takes to have a good team. Any girl on this team, we knew, can step up in any situation, and that's what it took at the state tournament. We had to use every single person on our team to get through all those games. And we're just extremely proud of these girls because they've worked so hard and deserve this.
Who's the shortest one here? You might be likely short. So you're all right, come on in. We got probably six or seven, and six or seven, we can do it. You can stand straight in the middle. Sneak in between them. You're fine?
Downstairs.
You're a setter, you're front setter. Coaches, get in here. See? There you go. Look at that.
There you go.
One, two, three. Perfect.
All right, hold on, watch the paper. Yeah, baby. There you go. Thanks for staying for them, or, you know, we made you, I guess. And thank you for staying for them. One last round of applause, way to go. All right, Chief, you can dismiss them. Nothing but fun here tonight at City Hall.
I think Troy's buying more than one round after this.
He's going to be with the firefighters and their families.
20 minutes, man. Killing me.
Do we have somebody in the back?
Streepie's back there.
Streepie's back there? Come on, Streepie. All right, as we empty out, we'll start with the remaining business on our agenda. All right, we've come to public requests of council. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, you may be heard by approaching the podium in the back. Please limit your comments to a couple of minutes, try not to be repetitive. We'd like to hear from you. Is there anyone here for public requests of council? All right, we'll close public requests of council, we'll move to our first hearing. This is with regard to the Spencer Creek Lift Station. Anything that want, anybody wants to add on this after last night?
I think we've covered it pretty well, Your Honor.
Yes, sir, does anybody have questions for Mr. Morlock before we open the public hearing? Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the planned specifications in form of contract for the Spencer Creek Lift Station Bid Package 1. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? Close that public hearing and move to the resolution. Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a resolution approving the planned specifications in form of contract and estimate of cost for the Spencer Creek Lift Station Improvements Bid Package Number 1, Lift Station Project, and move approval.
Second. Any discussion on this item? We've got the opportunity to hear an awful lot about it. Obviously, it's a great project to open up room for growth. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed bid package number one. Let's move to bid package number two with regard to the Forest Main project. Does anybody have questions for our city engineer Brent Morlock on this project bid package? All right, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to the bid package for the Forest Main project. Planned specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? Close that public hearing and move to a resolution for Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the planned specifications in form of contract and estimate of cost for the Spencer Creek Lift Station Improvement Bid Package 2, Forest Main Project, and move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion on this item? Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
We have unanimously passed bid package number two. Let's move to a public hearing regarding our Gateway Pedestrian Bridge. Does anyone have questions on this for our Assistant City Administrator Jeff Ryder or any other person on staff? Seeing no questions, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing regarding our Gateway Pedestrian Bridge. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close that public hearing and move to a resolution. Councilmember Palczynski, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the planned specification in form of contract for the Gateway Pedestrian Bridge Trails Phase 1 project. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion? All right, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
All right. The Bridge Trails Phase One Project was unanimously passed. We move to a resolution for Councilmember Adamson.
Fifteen?
Fifteen it is.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing a transfer of funds for various community improvement program projects. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? We heard the explanation and the need there for last night. It made sense logically. Okay. Michelle, please call the roll.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
We have unanimously approved the transfer of funds as discussed. We now move to an ordinance on first reading. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a first reading of an ordinance amending Beddorff City Code Section Six dash one dash two eighty-five. Speed restrictions by reducing the speed limit to forty miles per hour on Criswell Street from Forest Grove Drive to Valley Drive. I move approval of this ordinance at the first reading.
Second. Can anybody who lives on the road object? There's two of us, but we don't vote. We have a motion, a second is our discussion. Michelle, please call the roll on, the roll on our first reading.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved the first reading. There'll be two more readings, reducing the speed on Criswell to forty miles an hour. I have a second reading for Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the second reading of an ordinance amending Beddorff City Code Title Eight, Public Utilities and Services, Chapter Four, Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District for the purpose of establishing the downtown Beddorff self-supported municipal improvement district boundary and term. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second. Any discussion here? Good people doing good things. Ryan, one more and you're going to keep your job. I know you do, buddy. You do great work. All right, Michelle, please call the roll.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Palczynski.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
All right, unanimous approval in two of three readings. We move to another second reading. This is for Councilmember Jaeger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the second reading of an ordinance amending the Beddorff City Code to provide an additional lust site at eleven zero one. Devil's Glen Road. I move approval of second reading.
Second. Any discussion on this particular item?